I'll go ahead and call to order our December 8th meeting of the Escanito Library Board of Trustees. Uh, the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Did anyone have any corrections that needed to be done? Oh, I'm sorry. Zach, actually, are there any oral communications?
None.
Okay, thank you. All right, great. Um, any corrections to the minutes or would somebody like to make a motion?
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, five oh.
Okay. I think we need to discuss dates and times now for the quote-unquote special meetings, right? Did anyone have, um, I just wanted to start by saying that, um, for the January meeting on the 5th, I'll be out of town, so I prefer not to host it then. Um, I have no problems hosting it the day that we would normally meet at a different time.
Yeah, I'd rather look at the regular, the regular date at a different time also since I'll be out of the town on the 26th.
So, I mean, I can do noon, 1 o'clock. Um, 1 o'clock's what we've been doing. What do we think?
I'm open to anything.
So are we looking at January 12th?
Yeah.
Uh, just different time?
Okay, yeah.
Uh, just pay attention. It said the meetings would have to end by 1:00 P.M.
Oh, 1:00 P.M. Okay, great.
So would you be open to 11?
Let me, uh, let me look this up.
I think you could do 11 and be done by 1:00.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, I could be here for that.
Merrick, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, that works for me too. Okay, so 11:00 A.M. on the 12th. Do we just want to carry that through for the, I think the 3rd, we may want to reschedule regardless because that's right the day before 4th of July. I don't know if anyone else is going to be out of town.
I will probably be out of town.
You will? You will? Okay, yeah.
So not, not 7:13?
We could do, we could do, yeah, I don't know why it says July 3rd. That doesn't make sense, right? That would be the 13th.
Oh, 13. That's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so it is the 13th. I was looking at that and just wondering. All right.
So would 11 o'clock for all four of these work?
Would for me.
I'm gonna be out of town on the 13th of April. We could move that one. Could we move that one?
It looks available on the 6th or the 27th of April.
Um, the 6th would work for me.
The 6th works for me.
The 6th is a Thursday?
First Thursday anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, it works.
Okay, great. So we have then the 12th at 11:00, April 6th at 11:00, July 13th at 11:00, and October 12th at 11:00. Great. Uh, do we need to vote?
I think we should take a motion in a second. Yes?
Can you double check the 6th and 11:00?
Yeah, yeah, let me, uh, check that real quick on our internet. Sorry, let's take a second again to our system. Yeah, it's showing available on the 6th at 11:00.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to, uh, change the times and dates for the January, April, July, and October meetings for next year. January 12th will be at 11:00 A.M., April 6th at 11:00 A.M., yep, July 13th at 11:00, and October 12th at 11:00.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, five zero.
Over to you, Dara.
Yeah, I think there were some questions about the job readiness room update. I expect questions, uh, if you need clarity, because I'm still learning about this myself. The job ready- readiness room is an initiative, um, of the innovated, innovated 78 Economic Development Departments. It was started by Carlsbad Innovation and Economic Development Department. So this program works in partnership with local chambers of commerce to provide online job readiness training for people pursuing entry-level positions and connects them with local businesses seeking employees. Participants can also, uh, work with a learning success coach in addition to teaching job readiness. Students, uh, who complete the five courses are matched with employers for interviews. Uh, so at a minimum, they'll get interview practice. We will launch the job readiness room in January of 2023, as will, um, the city. So it'll be advertised in the weekly activities report, but also we will send it out in our January newsletter. Um, we're, right now, we just need some time to make sure that staff have a chance to familiarize themselves so that they can explain it to patrons and walk them through logging in, creating an account. And we'll promote the launch also on our social media. Anyone interested in exploring the site can now do so by going to the, um, uh, URL listed there. Carlsbad bendable, carlsbad.bendable.com. Do you have some questions about it?
I, I have, uh, one.
Okay.
So it's say, it's in, in particip- partnership with chambers of commerce. What are they doing?
Uh, so they're supposed to be promoting it as well. I, um, can definitely follow up as far as who's doing what. In November, it was like, late November, we had a Zoom meeting where they gave us the information and said, okay, libraries, here you go, and run with it, you know, promote it, make sure people know about it. So I haven't, I, I don't feel like they've gotten it completely organized yet. Um, I think, I think it's getting there, um, but a lot of that is just us learning. I don't know specifically the chamber's role except to reach out to the area businesses and hopefully help the participants who have completed the five courses or the five courses of their choosing to get matched with a local business to do the interview process.
Okay, and the five courses are taught by?
So it, they're all online. So what this gives us access to are multiple databases and platforms that we may not subscribe to, but because we're part of this initiative, our patrons will be able to use something that might be on, um, I don't know, give me a database. A, a database we don't own. They'd still have access. We wouldn't have to pay anything. And so they'd be able to take, um, five, you know, whether it's a computer course or food handling course, those types of things, so they can add it to their resume and then go for that first entry-level position. Okay.
Do you know if we're, um, I mean, this might be a question for, I guess, Carlsbad. But are we working at all with like Interfaith in there, like, um, I think they have a very large homelessness program?
Yes, um, and the, we could also follow up with Jennifer, our Deputy Director of Economic Affairs. So she'll know the details of that. I don't know the extent, but yes, they have been named as one of the places we're working with.
Yeah, and, uh, Escanito High School has a, uh, program to, uh, get students their, uh, food handlers cards. Their food.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, as well, yeah.
Uh, well, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? No? Okay, wonderful, moving on. Okay, so for the city council presentation, um, the reason I put this on the agenda was to kind of come up with, um, a list of agenda topics that we'll, um, present on. Uh, and then next meeting in January, um, we would go over the preliminary draft of that presentation. My original, my, my thought is first to, um, do like an introduction of the library and the board. Zach mentioned that Dane White will be the new mayor, so we will have new folks, um, to talk to. Uh, and so I was thinking we'd do an introduction, and then we'd go into like our accomplishments over the last two to three years. I think that's really important. Um, and then we would go into our vision.
Okay, um, would our vision be, why don't you guys get started on a new library?
So the vision would be what we all just, um, we all agreed upon last year. Uh, so, you know, talking through, um, you know, what we're gonna, probably the strategic plan, honestly, that probably needs to be in there as well. So four topics, strategic plan and then vision of the new library, yes.
Um, I'd, I'd be happy to, uh, put together the history of, um, all the previous attempts, uh, to start the new library. Just because I, well, I, I think it's worth at least looking at that because it might energize them or shame them into doing something because we've had nothing but failed attempts since the year 2000.
I would think that this preliminary meeting, we kind of want to hype up the library a little bit, and especially the board and what we've accomplished and how, um, I think we're very, one of the things that Joanna said is that it's good that we're going first because we're one of the more involved boards. Um, so being able to show them what we've accomplished and the fact that we're looking into a new library would be great. I think the history of the library would definitely be something that they need to see, but probably not for this specific presentation. Okay. All right, so introduction, accomplishments, strategic plan, and then vision. Sound good?
So how would you like to divvy up the hope with?
Oh, I was gonna do it myself with Joanna, but, um, yeah, like, I, I don't mind doing that. I don't know, Zach, how, how, normally how like detailed are bri- like presentations?
Yeah, great question. So actually, this is a new pro- practice the council's put in place, so you're gonna be the first, uh, commission to do it?
Okay.
Uh, which, uh, we have the confidence for you guys to be able to do that.
Yeah.
But all I have to say, uh, it's, you know, however in-depth you want it to be. The general overview that, uh, the board and commission subcommittee gave was that they just want to kind of accomplishments, any struggles you were encountering and your vision and things of that nature. So I think you can anticipate having between 10 to 15 minutes, uh, to give a presentation and then be ready to field any questions they have, and all of, all of you are invited to be there. I think Carolyn as president would be the presenter, but you can all be there to support for sure.
Okay, so I would, I would probably come up with the slides. Um, I, when I give presentations at work, it's much more of like, I, I talk a lot more than what is on the slide. So I don't wanna, I want to make sure that we're giving enough information. Um, so I'll probably do a rough draft, send it to Joanna, get her input, and then in January, present to you guys. And then we can make changes from there, and then it'll be ready for the February meeting as well. Um, so we can just finalize, be done, be good, and then present on the 15th. Yeah?
Okay, so rule of thumb, about a minute per page usually?
Yeah, I mean, I think with, with these, I, I would probably, um, I'd probably only have like four to five slides likely. Um, and I'll do two minutes per, but yeah.
I, uh, I, I'm really happy you're gonna, uh, talk with Joanna because I think, you know, she's lived this thing. She's lived through the history of it. I would like the council to know, even though I voted against it, I'm very pleased with L S and S. And I don't know whether Joanna would feel that's something we should stay away from, and if she does, I agree with her. But that would be something. I also think we should touch on the, uh, the grant that we are getting and what we're gonna do, uh, that we're excited about that. So I would like to, to see that.
Okay.
And then where you fit that in, whether it's accomplishments or, or visions. I don't really care where you put it, but those are a couple of things that, that I'd like to see included.
Okay, I think that's reasonable. What about you, Virginia?
Sure you'll include this, but I like how, uh, we have talked about before how the library is like the largest resource that brings community together, so it'd be great to highlight the lab, the library staff and how great they're doing. Um, and then maybe if we could put some stats in there.
I think the stat that's most impressive to me, and before I got on the board, I would never have believed it. But how many people use this library every day? That, it's not, it's not big analytics, it's just something that's very apparent. Everybody can understand it, and it shocks me still how many people use it every day. And I think that would resonate with, with the, uh, the council. And also, we have, how many new people do we have on that council? Because even Joe is, we've never talked before with, when Joe's on there. So who, who's on, who's on there now?
Our new council currently, so, is going to make up right now of, uh, Mayor White, uh, Councilmember Morosco, Councilmember Martinez, and Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Garcia just vacated his District 3 seat. Uh, so we're going to have the possibility of actually appointing a new council member. That has to happen by February 12th, so that person would be seated by then. And just if I may, if you know of anyone who would want to apply to be on the, uh, Escanito City Council, you have to, that person's living District 3, we're gonna start that process next week, just to let you know.
Well, the only person on there is Mike Morosco, who, who lived through the transformation that we went through to get to where we are now. And so it will be good to, to let them know, you know, like, like that idea of how I'm gonna use it every day. I'll bet you, I'll bet you if you asked that question, they'd say like 500 or something instead of what it is, so.
Okay.
Those are the kind of things, I think. Thank you.
Merrick, how about you? Any, any suggestions? Okay, okay, great. And then John, I'll give you the last word.
I, if we go through our accomplishments and the strategic plan, um, and L S and S and the grant, depending on what type of depth we go into, um, we've already got 10 to 15 minutes. So, um, let's see how it lays out.
Okay.
So that, uh, you know, uh, we can get the kind of vision, whatever that's gonna be, in there.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, great. Thanks. I'll take a first crack, send it over to Joanna, uh, synthesize from there, and then, um, present in January. Okay, great. All right, reviewing of the bylaws. So this is something I had asked Katie about last, um, after last meeting, is if we could take a look at this. I know that we're, um, we should be reviewing these once a year, right? Yeah, okay, and this is it. One of the things I wanted to bring up was that in our bylaws, we have, um, the meeting times, uh, there. And I'm wondering if it might be better to meet later in the day every now and again so that more of the public could potentially, um, be involved. I'm not sure what other people's thoughts are, um, but that was what I kind of wanted to explore. And then I know, John, that you have some other, um, some other things to discuss here. Did you wanna bring up any of your?
Do you wanna go? You wanna go over the time first?
Sure, yeah. So like what I was thinking was probably later, um, obviously, maybe around 5:36, um, which would allow hopefully more people with kids or, um, just more people in general to be more involved. I don't have like a prescribed, you know, every other month or whatever, but, um, just interested to hear, um, what your thoughts are, everyone's thoughts are.
I don't have any, any, um, intelligent comments to make other than, than maybe, uh, Ron's been around a while. I'd like to see what he thinks of that. And also, Dara's worked for other libraries, maybe she can, uh, fill in what she's learned.
We were, we were just chatting about that over here. Um, since this is my first California library, um, I'm gonna have Katie talk about this too. In my experience in Ohio and New Hampshire, we often had our meetings at 6:00 in the evening. So that was always like the directors, uh, or whoever was, you know, part of that particular meeting was like a stay late day, not a problem for our, from our end. But then, um, I mean, Katie was just, that's why, what I was just asking Katie. But I know Carlsbad meets around the same time. Do you know about other libraries in California? So, yeah, I don't know when I, it doesn't seem unheard of for me, but I'd have to ask around, uh, statewide to get a better feel for that. I'm sure it varies from, um, even within the state. It varies from library to library and regions.
I, I think that, uh, what I like to do when I, we make changes like this, uh, in my past experiences, let's try a few test cases. Maybe pick two or three times and see if there's any difference. And then, if there's no difference, then it would be up to the board to decide whether they want to go with 2:00 in the afternoon. And we also have to concern ourselves with Zach and make sure that we can get in.
Yeah.
But, uh, I think a test case of two or three meetings and just see if anybody shows.
Merrick, does that, does that work with your schedule?
I mean, I really don't have any preference as, as far as the time wise, time is concerned, and, and you seem to have, uh, to, to propose that it'll be more accessible to public at that hour than, than it is at 2:00 in, in the afternoon. So, yeah, that's fine. I mean, we can try it out and see, like Ron says, if it makes a difference at all.
What do you think, Virginia?
It would be a great change because it would open up the opportunity for people, a, a different pool of people to be able to serve on the board as well.
True, true. Okay, um, Zach, how do we determine feasibility for like a 6:00 P.M. on a, on a Thursday?
Yeah, a couple of things. I just have to check with building maintenance to make sure everything's okay. Uh, the reservation schedule, sometimes the council has odd meetings and stuff like that. Uh, and we also have like, uh, California Public Utilities Commission meets here occasionally. So I would just have to check the specific dates, but it's also something, since I know you already went through the process of selecting your special meeting times, but since you already have special meetings designated, maybe those would be opportune times to try the evening schedule instead of the morning schedule, just something to think about. Uh, but, you know, I could work that out and, and, you know, find out for you what's available, but I, I can be here.
Okay. Okay, so how about we do this? How about you look into that, Zach, and then we can maybe vote at the next, um, next meeting in January?
Happy new year.
Does that work for everybody? Okay.
I, I, I think on the agenda, it would be helpful if, if you get the, put the proposed dates and times so we can all come here already knowing our schedules without.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I'll coordinate with Katie and Dara on that.
Okay. Okay, um, did anyone else have anything that they'd like to bring up with regard to the bylaws?
Yeah, I went through them last night, so, uh, just a few things that, um, I'm not saying they need changing desperately, but it, they just don't, uh, well, I'll just, I'll just list them out and you guys can tell me if you think it's worth doing, talking about or not. Uh, first is 3.4, compensation. Board members shall serve without compensation except reimbursement of expenses related to the business of the board and to their, and the training of members. Shouldn't we have something in there that says that those expenses, if they're expected to be reimbursed, should be pre-approved by the board?
I would agree with that.
Right. That's, that was the first one. Uh, 4.1, uh, reads that we can change the time of the meeting, uh, but we can't change the place. And sometimes the place may not be available, and just by moving to another place, we're in violation of our bylaws. So maybe we could change the time and place. 4.6, agenda. Um, since this is the Board of Trustee meetings, um, I would think at least we ought to have the agenda be mutually agreed versus us not having any control over what's on it. Not to say that you're gonna, gonna, gonna pencil out all our, our, our agenda requests.
Until you change it, I can, right?
Right, that's it.
Uh, trustee Schwab, may I just add one thing?
Go ahead.
It might be for your own edification on that. In the council meetings, at the very end, we have a section called Future Agenda, and that's where the council members have the opportunity to place items on the next agenda. That might be a way to, uh, deal with that for, for you guys at every meeting. You could just say which items you want placed on the future agenda.
And also, Dara sends out email too, asking for any agenda topics that we want to discuss at the next agenda. That's coming out as well as it is right now.
Yeah, but it wouldn't be bad to write it, because let's say, I don't know, get hit by a car again. You, you want to make sure that the next person's gonna stick to what you want them to do? That's my two cents.
Okay, so how would you propose changing that language, John? Would it be, the agenda for board meetings is, is set by both the?
Well, the last sentence says the, and I don't know that the last sentence is done, uh, on a regular basis. Director of Library and Community Services, uh, will review the proposed, proposed agenda with the President of the Board at least one week before the meeting date. If that happened, um, and any, uh, all agenda items, uh, all items on the agenda will be mutually agreed. So all you need to do is add that.
Okay, so, so the library director is still going to set the agenda with input from the board?
Yeah, review it with the President of the Board and, um, and will mutually agree on the items, uh, for, for the, uh, to be on the agenda for the upcoming meeting.
I may just add one, one piece, that the only, uh, thing I would add is that with the Brown Act, i- if you start getting into the position of, um, expressing your opinion directly on how items come on the agenda, I can just see that potentially triggering a Brown Act issue, uh, only because you might be saying, I'm in favor of this, I'm not in favor of that. And I just, that would be my only caution in how you.
Well, we're, we're, we're okay, but, but then we're, we're, uh, supporting an autocracy.
Okay, I think, so I think what, what, what we want to avoid is any, uh, anything having to do with the Brown Act, right? So I think that what we can say here to make it a little bit more clear is that any requested agenda item by the board will end up on the agenda. Right?
Okay. Okay, turnabout's fair play.
Well, the only thing is, this doesn't say it comes to me, this is the Director of Library and Community Service. So this has you actually sending your agenda request, um, to Joanna.
That's what I was wondering about.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, so we need to revamp this entire section.
But we don't do it that way.
We don't.
Bylaws, uh, and I apologize, this might be predating my time because I was in here during the L S and S. Were they approved before L S and S, or were these the most updated?
I thought they updated them right after, yeah.
Okay, yeah. They might not have had the delineation then, because it would be the library director.
Yeah, so the, the last time this was revised was March 14th of 2019. So that was right when we got on the board.
Right before.
Before, you're right. Oh, my goodness. Okay, well.
Yeah, some of this was done like right after. So the transition was January 15th of 2018. Um, I know for a fact we updated it because prior to L S and S, the board met at the library in the library boardroom. We specifically moved it to this location due to the ability to record and have everything standardized with all the other boards and commissions, um, for ease of use and also better compliance with the Brown Act, uh, which is why the, the location is specified on the bylaws. Um, but that's, yeah, that's all I know.
Okay, so. So how do we, it seems like we're probably gonna need to scrub this quite a bit. How do we do that in the most efficient way?
I think as of right now, some of the suggestions that have been put forward, for example, looking at a different time, I'm gonna come back with that proposal next week. If you want myself to do the research on some of these other areas of language change, I could come back with some potential Brown Act compliant proposals for you, if that would be helpful. I wouldn't be putting them forward, but I would just provide them to you. That might be one way to do it. Now we have time to review it as opposed to having to make a, a decision right now.
Okay.
That's one way.
Sounds good to me.
I think that's a great way forward, thanks, Zach, yeah.
Hey, can I keep going?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, record of proceedings. Um, we don't do this. Zach does it. We don't give him anything. He gives it to us. So this, this is, it's not accurate. So what, what would be the best way to reword that? I think, I think us being responsible for making sure that occurs, sounds good. And just leave it wide open at that.
Most definitely. Would it be helpful, uh, it, it, for you, John? I can just go through the entire bylaws with a fine tooth comb. And personally, I haven't gone through the library bylaws myself before, so I could look and see where we're out of compliance, what's not. so I could look and see where we're out of compliance, what's not working, and then just basically come back with a whole list.
Okay.
That might be helpful.
Okay, I've got three more.
Perfect.
Okay, and I'll try to keep them brief. Well, four more. Can you also take a look at calling? When we have a, change the time of our normally scheduled meeting to a different time, can we call it something else besides the special meeting, which has its own definition in the bylaws? All right, 5.4. Do we ever do this? Should you just leave it alone? Because it, it's not something we've ever, that I've ever seen us do or heard about us doing. I, I don't either. I mean, it's pretty much the library and the city that do all that stuff. I don't, I don't see where, maybe other than get involved in some approval or oversight, but for us to, I, I don't get it.
Yeah, would this be like approving becoming part of the Sarah collective or no, right?
I think this was probably in before we became very technological, and I think probably it is unnecessary now.
Yeah. Okay, 5.6. I was really astounded to see that we're required with the assistance of the Director of Library and Community Services, yeah, Joanna's assistants, put together the report that goes to the state. That's not quite what happens.
I think we also voted on the timeframe for that, right? Now we're moving to calendar?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this one is for the California State Report. Yeah, this is, this, this is the annual State Library Report that we, we do put in every year. Myself and some colleagues from LSNS get that data together. So, yeah, that needs to be rewritten to be correct, but that's, usually I'll report about it to you guys, but it's not, yeah.
The last sentence in 6.1, the expenditure of allocated funds will be determined by the Director of Library and Community Services with the trustee, Board of Trustees' approval to the purposes of authorizing, to the purposes authorized in the bylaws. So, that means we can't come up any ideas of spending money ourselves. It has to come from the Director of Library Services.
Which I think, I don't think that's right, right? I think everything we've heard from Joanna and finance is that we are able to spend those funds at our discretion. I, I don't even know if it needs to go...
I don't, I don't know. It, it, it just, I just didn't understand the way it was worded, that's all.
Okay.
And I think 72.2 falls into the same category that Ron said it's maybe just...
I think that, Zach, I think probably if you would consult with Joanna on this one.
Yeah, okay.
And maybe come up with the way it really occurs now, that might be the best way to go.
Okay. And last but not least, contracting with other municipality, municipal, oh shit.
Municipalities.
Other places in County, or county. It, it sounds like this is the same as the other one. This is pre-technology, and I don't know that we're ever involved in anything like that.
I think you're right.
Yeah, okay, so that would be subject to deletion like the other one that Ron brought up.
Okay.
That was it.
Great. Well, good, that's a good little scrub.
Yeah, it, it needed that.
Thanks, John. Okay, so for the agenda next month, we'll have a revisit of the bylaws. Okay. Okay, great. Moving on to the goals, resilience.
Yes, so there's a couple blank this time because our strategic plan is still pretty new and we haven't had a chance to hop on all of these. So, under the category of reduced waste, the very first one, review and suggest best practices by scheduling two meetings per year with the City Recycling Division to review and suggest best practices. That's on our agenda for Library Management Team on the 21st. So, we're gonna figure out who's going to spearhead that and how we're gonna approach it. And then hopefully by the time we roll around to this particular category, again, we'll have dates and everything filled in for you, so we can at least say it's in progress. Continue to ensure proper disposal of, by verifying reuse and recycling of materials that have been withdrawn from the collection and technology that has reached end of life. We're, we're currently reselling or recycling our weeded books. In terms of technology, IT handles all of that for us, but we do tend to reassign monitors especially on a regular basis. So, we do try and reuse anything that we've gotten rid of. Educate residents about responsible consumption by partnering with the City Recycling Division to offer two library programs such as composting. We recently did Escondido's Explorer Environment Fair, and that was in conjunction with the San Diego, De Gito River Valley Conservancy, the Vulcan Mountain Foundation, Ratty's Children's Hospital Center for Healthier Communities, Surprise Farms, and the San Diego Agricultural, Agricultural Center. And we shared information to learn or teach people about watershed, local wildlife, conservation, safety, history, and talked about volunteer opportunities as well. As far as shortening, to shorten travel distance and reach larger audience by providing programs in three different spaces throughout the service area. We do this with our partnership with the San Diego Children's Museum, but that's been something we've been doing for quite a while. So, we are gonna have, again, in our meeting December 21st, we'll be talking about what we want to add. Typically, most of our traveling programs are children-focused, so we also will explore the idea or the possibilities of what we could do that would be a, a different age demographic. And the next category is encouraging, is encourage healthy living.
Excuse me, so would that be another location?
Yeah, like, I, in a perfect world, we'd have a bookmobile. But since we don't, we would send our staff out to another location, whether, like currently we do the museum, but maybe trying to establish a regular program in another space where we could reach more people that might not be able to easily get to and from the library.
Like, like the East County Community Center or something like that?
I mean, I wouldn't rule that out, but, oh, yeah, like if we had that location. I don't know, we haven't really talked about it yet.
Yeah, I, I, I wonder sometimes if there's a, still some residual over the fact that there used to be a library branch there and it got closed in, what, 2008 or 10 or something?
And there still is residual.
Yeah, so, oh, well.
Increase awareness by offering resources for home gardening such as a seed or succulent swap and three programs on organic gardening. We have our next succulent swap coming up January 17. Our Literacy Center actually does a program on composting, or they have in the past, so I have reminded them that maybe we want to do that again in the year ahead. So, likely we will, so we should be adding that soon. Next category, encourage wellness. Provide alternatives to screen time for children and tweens by offering four non-screen focused programs. We currently have 26 programs just in the month of December that are non-screen programs, and I do think our numbers have gone up quite a bit. We've had to add additional duplicate storytimes because of the number of parents and children showing up. So, that, that's a definite positive and definitely confirms there's a need for non-screen time. Support mindfulness by inviting a local yoga studio to offer one series of free classes. We have done that, not necessarily with yoga, but we have meditation and mindfulness classes that are coming up in January and February.
All right, moving on to the Director's Report.
Were there any questions about the statistics at all before I move on?
Other than the fact that they, that the nearest one is 2024 and you're already working on it, no?
Okay, all right. So, in October, the Adult Services Department hosted the Second Saturday Concert. There were 24 people in attendance, and the Artsy Adult Spooky Silhouette Painting Program had 14 in attendance. They also hosted the Escondido Writers Group with 11, and there were four book, book clubs with a combined total of 42 participants. Our Youth Services Department hosted, and I'm probably gonna butcher this name, Danza Zinaz, how do I say the last, Zinazati?
It's like a, I, I, it's a, I can't pronounce it either.
Okay, good. So, if, I feel better that Katie can't pronounce it either. So, we're gonna say that program, Dia de la Mortis. The Danza was an Escondido-based Aztec dance group that gave a presentation and performed the dances and they, after explaining what the significance of the movements were. The project was made possible with our Innovation Lab grant, and so there were 125 people in attendance for that event. We also had our, for the second time, we did our community offerenda, which was popular again in, during the Dia de la Mortis situation, or, situation.
Celebration.
Celebration, thank you. Over 147 people attended that event and 100 people left something on the offerenda. So, the event featured several Dia de la Mortis stories, music and folklore dance, and the decorating of a traditional sugar skull to take home. The Youth Services Department programs continue to see wonderful turnout for in-person programming. And in our Literacy Center, we welcomed two new staff members. Marcella Calderon is a library assistant two. She's going to be assisting ESL and FFL and general adult literacy by teaching classes, conducting assessments to place learners with tutors, doing outreach and a wide variety of other tasks. Marcella started at the beginning of November and has been a great addition to our team. Rosie Intorath is part of our partnership with AmeriCorps and is working to bring additional help to expand the literacy program. She started in late November and will be assisting with the program, one-on-one tutoring, outreach, ESL and other literacy initiatives.
How many people do we have in the literacy program now? Do you, do you have any idea?
How many people? No, I actually haven't, the last time I asked was more than two months ago, so I haven't checked that out yet. I know we have people on waitlist for the ESL program, and the last number I knew was 11 learners, but that very well could have changed because I don't know if they've added any or lost any. So, I, I will definitely make a note to get those numbers for our next meeting.
Is, if it's, if it's...
The 11 is just for ESL, I think. Because we've got other one-on-one, don't we?
No, we, we, because we were in a transition, so they're doing assessments right now. So, I think after the assessment's done, we'll see another spike. That's why it's down. No, that's okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to, that's a lighthouse program, and I, I would not want anybody turned away. And I wanted to make sure that, that we're recruiting enough volunteers to make that viable because it's, it's a fabulous program.
Yeah, I will definitely have those numbers for us next time. I know Sheila's very proactive in making sure that she keeps people enrolled and active, so.
Thank you.
Okay, great. That takes us to around the room for comments or questions, concerns, sharing. Virginia, would you like to go first?
I attended the Ballet Folclórico cultural event that happened just recently, and I thought it was awesome. It was great attendance. It seemed like there was about 75 family members there enjoying it. I really liked the, the group that performed. They only, they not only performed, but they taught the history of each dance and what region of Mexico it came from and the reasons why. Like, they didn't have these kind of instruments on this side of Mexico, so they used this, and this is why you hear a lot of like xylophone instead of guitar. And so, I danced ballet folclórico as a kid, and it's very, it's a very traditional thing in my family, but that was my first time hearing the history of it. So, it brought a lot of cool knowledge to my daughter and I, so I just really appreciated that. Whoever, you know, put on that event did a good job at selecting the group.
Well, in addition to being in the library a number of times this month, I had a great time. Ashley Hayes gave me a tour of the Pioneer Room. The Pioneer Room is a gem that we need to figure out a way with the Historical Society, in my opinion. We need to figure out a way to let a lot of people in Escondido know about this thing because it, it's just delightful. I, in fact, one of the things I was most interested in is, she says, they have a lot of people that come in there to research their home, which I had no idea about that. When you walk in, on the left, there's the local histories, and they put that there so people can see it through the window. But I just want to do everything we can, and, and I'll talk with the History, Historical Society people, but we need to do everything we can to make this more widely known. I, they're making a video. I think it's gonna be seven minutes or so. I'd like to figure out a way to get that shown at the Rotary Club, for example. And just anything we can, anything we can do to, to publicize this more because there's a lot, Escondido, for those of you who have come here lately, it's, it's one of the landmark communities. There was Oceanside Vista in Escondido, Poway, Sand Marcus, those things have all come along lately. So, you have lots of people in Escondido that have lots of roots. And so, I want to make sure that, that we do everything we can to publicize the Pioneer Room.
And we will be in 2023, both Ashley and John are working on some lectures, so we can have like a quarterly lecture series on the history of Escondido. For our all-staff day, John did a history of the buildings in our immediate area, and it, it was really good, and I think we were kind of his practice group. But it was great, and it was nice to have, I mean, he did, he did such a great job presenting. I think that it would be a great program just for the library, so we're gonna be adding that. And I don't, I think the first one's gonna be the buildings, but then I'm not sure what they're gonna keep it going with.
Well, I happen to know Frances Ryan, not well, but I knew her, and she was, she was a patriarch and gave an awful lot of stuff to the library. And then there's another person in the brochure that also did. But I think it's great for people to know the history of Escondido because it has a lot of, a lot of history.
Just, just to follow up on what Ron said, I think the best thing long-term, short-term it's impossible, but long-term we can do is get that Pioneer Room co-located in the library somehow. Last meeting, you brought up the Link system. Yeah, the, the, the Link. Okay, whatever.
Link Plus.
Link Plus, that's right. It's a little plus on the, on the, on the labels. So, I said, okay, I'll give this a try. I've been trying to look, find these, pardon me, tried to find two separate books for over a year, okay, and did not feel like spending an arm and a leg for them. I ordered one on Link. I had it in three days. I ordered another one on Link. I had it in, I can't remember, two, three, four days. And so, that, that's, it's fantastic. I'm getting, I got a 1952 reprint of an 1854 published book. I'm getting, I got a 1952 reprint of an 1854-published book. You know, who has that, right? So it works great, I'm, I'm just maybe a little, maybe it's just my natural paranoia. If you had, when they notify you, your book is in, it goes through the same notification process as the others, but it's not on the whole shelf. So you have to go say, hey, my book's not on the whole shelf, and they say, oh, yeah, it's here. So you gotta go pick it up at the desk, so after you do it the first time, you know, okay? But when I took the first one back, I looked at the barcode readers and, nah, I'm not putting it in there, because this label's already starting to fall off, and if it falls off, I, God knows where this thing's gonna go. And you get to friends at the library and it'll end up in somebody's dumpster. But just a thought, but the whole Link Plus system is, works incredibly well.
I'm glad that you like it. We currently have things from Link Plus behind the desk, because our self-checkout machines work through RFID reader, and not all items we get are RFID-coded, because not all libraries have it, so to avoid confusion with patrons trying to check out items...
Oh, I totally understand why, it's just that, you know, if you're your first-time Link user, you go to the whole shelf and it's not there.
And it's hard, because they all, like you said, they all go through the same system, and we can't create specific language just for a Link Plus holes.
That's, that's what I figured, I'm just saying.
No, I know, I know, I appreciate the feedback, I'm glad that you found the books you wanted.
Yeah, that big label they put on the front says, "Do not take this label off." Because if you do, it was just a book from the Whittier Library, what's it doing here?
Yeah, I mean, the nice thing about that is if it comes in, those barcodes are actually in our system, so our staff would still scan it to make sure that it's not a Link Plus item, it's just the Link Plus label makes everything much more streamlined for us.
Okay, so I'll, for now on, I'll just put them on the little belt and watch them disappear. Okay.
Just wanted to, just compliment you on the programs that you put together, and whether it's Dia de los Muertos or any others, and bringing people to library, the attendance of 140 people, that's, that's a lot of people. So it sounds like a great event, and all the events that you guys put together are great and really serve the community, so thank you.
Right, and then the last time I was in the library, the friends were, had all their carts out, and I had thought I would go over there to see if there were any kids' books for my nephew for Christmas, because they're all 25 cents. And when I got over there, there were already like two families with like toddler children looking through the books, and I, I was like, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do this right now, but it was very sweet to see, and I was very happy about that. So next time I'm in there, hopefully, hopefully I'll have the shelves to myself.
Yeah, okay, I do have some numbers for literacy, if you guys wanted those numbers. So for November, this is just for the traditional Families of Literacy and Adult Literacy Program, ESL is counted separately, and I don't have those numbers. But for Families of Literacy and Adult Literacy, we have 71 learners currently, 32 tutors, 27 learner tutor pairs. We had seven literacy classes, these were not ESL, these are the other classes, with a total of 308 hours of instruction combined between the classes and the tutoring. And we have 36 total volunteers, 32 of which obviously are the tutors, and that's just for literacy.
That's fab.
Yeah, and our regular volunteers, including this 36, is like 147 this month, in November.
Good job, thank you, Katie.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we will adjourn, so we are adjourned.